Very good. All right, first order of business is review of the minutes from the February twenty eighth meeting. Everyone should have the minutes in their packets. Any comments additions? 或者是 Hearing none, a motion to approve as submitted.
I'll make the motion.
Thank you, Joe. Can I get a second?
Sure.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, David. Any opposed?
Can't be scared.
And I apologize, everyone.
Wait a minute. Yeah, true. And I, I
Need a few minutes.
Thank you.
Yeah.
All right, first agenda item, county plan reviews. Claire, the village district, and I think you also have some of the test case reviews.
Yeah. Presentations. Through my item on
So Claire, before you start, so we have a bunch of people tonight. Welcome. That's awful nice of you to come out on a rainy Wednesday night. Um, so as everybody knows, plan municipal plan basically has three components. Zoning, subdivision, land development. Um, within each of that, there's different districts. The village district is the one that's currently up for review. It's been out to the county for a while. Um, we've worked over the course of better part of a year reviewing language and modifying terms. Um, and we'll show a map of what the village commercial district is and where it, where its boundaries are. Um, and what the county is now going to help us do is one, figure out if we finalized it. And then they do test cases, which is we take parcels and say, okay, if it got developed under this ordinance, what would that look like? And does that meet the intent of what we're trying to do?
Thank you. Um, this is not a final presentation. Um, so what the planning commission has is not the final draft. This is just a question of what the test, the design test that means that they found um, what the results of those were and what additional changes we decided to make based on the results. So I'm going to be going through um a little bit, just a refresher on what exactly are the tests, the ordinance stuff that we did? And why it's important to do them. We can go ahead to the next slide. Um, a little bit background. The two different test scenario that we did, um, or the two different sites for the different tests. Um, and site number two is the one that we're going to be focusing on as many, and there are four different scenarios. Um, and I'll go through each of those and when they were, when they're illustrating, um. And then after that, I'll go through the, the main highlights that were made to address the issues that found us part of the testing and and also to address when the planning commissions were, the last the last presentation. Um, and then a few other next slide. So the factors that go into a test, an ordinance test are um um, we're looking at dimensional standards and then we use the front yard setbacks. Um, and for properties of multiple buildings that would include the frontage occupation to or um, but I have a little bit more on that later on this presentation. The building length and bulk eight um, the density and intensity bonus options, so they're good factor in uh, building orientation, parking location, and some of the other factors that they um, are minimum parking requirements and impervious coverage. So there's some of the other standards that will impact what kind of developments I can go on, on initially progress. Next slide. So this is the scheme number one. Um, and frankly, this was not a very good. This is not, as example as me, that would not be good and probably not permitted the way that the, the code is primarily written. But it illustrates the importance of, um, of the building orientation standard. So in this case, it's shown the building is shown oriented towards Alderford Road, um, but we and the other scenarios will orient it more towards Main Street. An example of what is not a desirable then. Um, now I'll get into the frontage occupation further on next slide. Oh, sorry. So the next scene shows a the scenario with retail and cafe. So in this case, this meets the, the fifty percent frontage occupation requirement. Had an impervious coverage of sixty-one percent. Um, and, and I think in the last meeting, we were looking at some of the other um, other scenarios. There was some concern that the development that we're showing the test were enough and just to illustrate what the like work case scenario it would be. Um, and in part, that is because of the parking requirements. So it's kind of a inhibitor in what can be done because with certain uses there, different requirements for the minimum amount of parking that has to be provided. Um, granted, in this case, we're showing one additional space, but that is kind of a built-in limit to what is developed on the space. And that's something that I should may not want to consider later on for for future revisions. But in these cases, some of the development simply is permitted of how much parking, a certain use would be required. Um, so in addition, in this scenario, we're showing pedestrian connections from the sidewalk up to the entrance of the building. Um, and parking is located both behind the buildings and adjacent to buildings, and I'll address that further in the next couple of slides. Next slide. More, more minutes. Right, the scheme number three, this is showing a, um, the case of a restaurant and some retail on that property. It does not mean the front of occupation requirement in this space, the building's ninety percent and the fifty percent. Um, you'll notice the buildings are kind of at an angle, so oriented towards, but not completely parallel to Main Street, or at least the one building is not. Um, the, the parking again is located between the buildings and also behind the buildings. And um and there's an impervious coverage of sixty percent. In the village commercial district, currently there's a minimum a minimum impervious coverage of eighty. So this is below what is required. Max, not impervious, I'm sorry. Next slide. Excellent. This is the final scene. It's illustrating um apartment development with a restaurant and cafe. In this scenario, um, there is a building um, impervious coverage of sixty and frontage occupation of forty-four percent, so not mean that, all right, that require them. The buildings in this case are parallel to the, the Main Street and they're oriented towards Main Street. Um, the building looks in this, I'll just point out, in this case, that is kind of on top of the sidewalk, but that's just because of the angle so it's illustrating the height of the building, but then it kind of looks like it's overlapping, but it really is, is not overlapping. Um, it's uh the public, so there is also public space bonus, so in this case on the corner at Alderford, so it means that, that piece of land would count towards um their bonus. Um, that's one of the bonus provisions to provide public space as part of the development. And in this case, there would be a density of about five point six dwelling units per acre, which is um permitted as the residential density in the village district. So in all of these scenarios, they're showing um a little bit different orientation of buildings, a little bit different parking locations, um and relationship between the building and the parking in the building's street. Um, so some of the issues that were raised with us, and we were going through these different scenarios were issues that were raised during the last planning mission meeting were related to the density and intensity of uses. I'm going to the next slide. That's like I mentioned before, related to the, the parking requirements. Impervious coverage, um, and none of these scenarios are going too far above sixty percent, so we're not really illustrating what maximums impervious coverage would be in this case, but I will say that this lot is because of size. Um, so the other issues that were raised were related to building orientation, um, pedestrian connections from the sidewalks of the building entrances. Um, and we did additional testing on the frontage occupation to see if that wouldn't be an appropriate amount is required. Um, another consideration was parking access and location and location. Um, and then the, the building length and height of it. Right. So on the following slide, I'll show I simply had gave some of the text that you, you have also your, an advance of this meeting that most recent draft of the village district. Um, and I highlighted in that draft the sections that were added to address these concerns. So the next slide, this is the copy from imagine it would be bigger on the screen, if I thought that. Um, this is copy that was added to, uh, address pedestrian connectivity to sidewalks and buildings. And also to clarify the building orientation in the case of corner lots. So in this case, because this property is on the corner, it has frontage on Main Street and Alderford. Um, so we wanted to ensure that the building would be oriented towards Main Street and previously it hadn't been clarified that the building would have to be oriented towards the street of higher of the classification. So we updated that text to ensure that the building would be oriented towards that Main Street as opposed to um street of lower classification. Um, to again create that corridor along the Main Street during the village district. Um, we did add a little, that line at the top that said the direct sidewalk connection shop we provided between the street sidewalk and the building entrance. And I think it was something that we had discussed earlier on in the um and we felt that in the past, it, it really, um, it did create more of a walkable feeling to have that sidewalk entrance, even if there also is an entrance in the back of the building with the parking lot is. Having the option for pedestrians to enter in the side of the building creates more of a, a village landscaping character walking businesses along Main Street. Those and as part of the testing, and we can discuss this more. Uh, the next slide addresses parking and parking access and location. So uh, you recall back, one of the previous tests that we showed, um, there was parking that was shown along the street frontage. And we initially thought that the draft that we had written would have covered that sufficiently and would have prevented that. However, the way it had been written before was that it prohibited parking between a building and the street. But it didn't address any, any any time that there would be a parking lot next to a building. And the, so if you had a lot that was wide enough, you could have next to a building. And there wasn't any protection to, to create any buffer screen between the front and the foot. So we completely added some standards that would ensure that there would be some kind of buffer, um, with landscaping. Nothing that would be okay to create that would fall. But just something to create a little bit of separation and screen the parking lot, um, in the case that it might be located next to a street. Ideally, it would be located behind the buildings, but in the game room, there would be okay. Slide. So this is for building height and length. Um, the maximum building height is what it currently is, um, is three and a half stories or forty feet, whichever is greater, current standards. And one option that would be thought of, um, as a possibility to consider could be a minimum building height. Um, the reason this came up is because there were we found the testament was possible to for example, a CBS, like a one-story, twelve thousand square foot pharmacy building. And we were thinking that um, that might um, as a way to make a building like that, or at least like that fit in a little bit more, you could have some kind of facade height or building height standards that would at least it, um, require a little bit of a taller building that you could, um, essentially to, um but articulate the facade a little bit and make it, add a little bit of visual interest rather than having a number of low slum buildings throughout the village district. And we were thinking of, of the building on the left-hand side, which I think is a little bit more character. Just something to consider. Um, I haven't added anything like that into the draft, but actually. Um, and building length, I think we'll know on the slide because I did get comments on John Kennedy, the email yeah. Draft, um asking if um asking if extensions would be permitted on the side of buildings. And so there, um, it's not a mind, it's not a major change, but it's just something that um, we'll need to address in the draft. If, if a building can be expanded up the side. That's just what I was hoping for. And lastly, next slide, frontage occupation. Um, this is um text from the draft that you have, it's the same dra, um, the same copy that we've seen previously. But I wanted to provide a graphic representation of what frontage occupation calculation would would constitute. Uh, because it's a little bit challenging when you start thinking about the different elements of what goes into So, um, what, what makes our occupation? It is the length of the building along the street and the, I mean, walkways, one driveway, no more than twenty-four, with um, any side yard setbacks and public space. And if there are environmentally constrained areas such as slopes, those are so you take all of those elements, you add them, add the length of all those together and then divide it by the fragment. So if you go to the next slide, you'll see it breaks down again, it's very small, I'm sorry, on the projection, it would be bigger. Um, but that this is the existing conditions, and on the following slide, um, this is showing a new kind of, a new development that would have three or buildings, a frontage occupation of eighty-two percent, and the existing conditions show the frontage occupation of forty percent. So without the addition of that new large building, it would be forty percent. And then with the new building, that would well over, um, the new building plus public space would make it way above the required fifty percent. So we wanted to illustrate, these are two extremes clearly, um. Um, but, but since the standard is fifty percent, we wanted to keep that would illustrate what that would be like in the village district. Again, this is a unique scenario of most properties are not that large. Um, but most properties are also say that a lot of properties vary in size in the village district. And, um, when we did some tests on lots with individual buildings, it was very hard to come up with a a number that would be consistent and make sense for all the properties. Um, so we we did all this to say that basically we think that fifty percent that we came up with previously is still a valid number. Um, but we wanted to provide a little bit of background on how we got to that.
You know how many existing parcels will be now compliant?
That's, that's a good question. No, we, we have not looked at that. And this would only apply for lots with multiple buildings on them. So any, any lot that has one building, it wouldn't apply to that.
So this doesn't allow for state development? You'd have to meet your fifty percent fronting buildings?
Yes.
The first time you built something?
If you have a lot, if you're composing a development with multiple buildings on one lot, then yes, you would have to that fifty percent frontage to require.
So you couldn't build two buildings now and third building later?
I think you'd like to do it under one's plan.
Yeah.
Could have.
Have a plan to be better.
Right.
Yeah, it's always a guarantee that it will be
With the time flies, and if you find approval, it could be ignorant, what defines public space? Yeah, it's it's always a term.
It would have to be the way that a sidewalk has to guarantee public access. He's meant what it would make it public.
Okay.
Unless it was a property owner who to allow people on the property, but it was still private space, but allow public access. That's it.
Sixty parcels would be not compliant today would be like the parcel bank bill. I think that's probably already pushing the fifty percent if that part of it's redeveloped. It's intended outstanding
So it would be a minimum that, that would
Okay. And then I'm surprised on your example one on the Alfer Road, I thought the ordinance said that the building has to be oriented towards the street of higher classification. So would they really have been able to do what you were depicting there?
No.
Okay.
It's, it's really meant to highlight the importance of that standard, but no, not.
Let's, I think that is the standard today, right?
Yes, yes.
Which we want, we want to.
Yes.
Look at it, we look at a deeper setback between the street and the, um, parking area over ten feet. I hesitate on the little bit of parking space.
Oh, you're saying for the, um for the parking lot setback?
For the setback, because ten feet doesn't allow you to really establish any decent vegetation. That's really going to look like anything other than a few you know, parsley on the plate kind of things. I could apply that anything deeper.
Uh, yeah, I didn't look into that. I, um we didn't test that number specifically. So I wouldn't be able to answer that because it's testing, but, um, ten fifteen feet may be appropriate. I guess I would have to look at what would be, um based on tree planting, that there would be a depth that would be required for that, perhaps would be a good standard to go off of.
If you talk to the last architects and ask them what's, you know, what's a generous amount enough space to really have trees that aren't just going to be stunted?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, we do have some standards like that out of some records.
Um, could I ask a question, Claire? Um, I think that there might be some discrepancies in that we're saying that the largest building, um, length could be a hundred and fifty feet. And then you're saying that the frontage occupation has to be a, um fifty percent minimum. So if we have a street length that is more than three hundred feet, then there, there, um there would be a discrepancy there because you'd have to have more than a hundred and fifty-foot building length.
Or two buildings.
Right, or two, two buildings, but it's still too much.
It's the building plus the wall, like that was the part about the format.
Yes. Um, the frontage occupation consists not just of buildings, but it also includes the side yard setbacks. So if you're on either side. And also any, um walkways that might be running through the property that way. One driveway. And any environmentally constrained area, and if there's, if there is that public space, now it also counts towards it. So you would add up the buildings, setbacks, all that, and then divide that total by a lot.
So the ordinance that you gave us, um, that was in with your packet, that page six has to be changed, I think, because it says the following elements shall be excluded from the frontage occupation calculation. And then it talks about sidewalks, that all that is excluded.
Yeah, we, we had a long discussion about the language, about the language, because it's, um depending on how you calculate it, but okay, yeah, we can, we'll check that. And then if it makes sense, we could add, um as much as I don't like to include, um equations written out, we could add something that would clarify exactly what that calculation would look like put in the code. And I think that's the question for Mike, if you think that is, as a zoning officer, if that would, um make your life easier, or if that makes sense to me, so we could certainly
Yeah, I think it, it wouldn't hurt to to come up with a draft, we can look at.
Okay, yeah.
But I agree with Michelle, the way, the way that the draft reads, any reader's going to say, okay, exclude those elements from the calculation. That's the way, yeah. We're highlighting the elements of
Yeah.
I think that two questions about the minimum building height, so that you had given that some thought. Um my first concern is that having a minimum building height isn't allowing for creative uses of the building. Uh, unless you want to limit the uses more. Um, some commercial uses, some of the kinds of uses you might not want a story building. And you might have a very attractive one-story building. And I don't know if you want to limit that much of what someone can do with their building. And then my other question is, um when you have a minimum building height, I think you also have to have something in there that prevents people from building faux façades. Because those are very unattractive. And I've seen that happen where buildings have to be a certain height and they put up a false spot.
Yeah.
And certainly don't want to see that.
Is the forty-foot height, um, that you have in the ordinance, is that in the existing ordinance now?
Yes.
Okay.
Which is you're trying to get more buildings in, right, wanting to be more flexible.
To go higher? Is that what you're saying?
Forty foot is the max.
That's the maximum currently.
Right. But I thought you were trying to get a minimum height in.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to ask me to consider if you wanted to, um create a more unified building, hey, look. But if that's not as, very good, certainly justice doesn't need to be addressed. It's not perceived as an issue right now, but it's right.
Any questions? I'll open it up if there's questions or comments from the audience. You know the drill, name, address. And, and, and I am going to say specific to this topic. Okay.
Is this kind of a revamp of the so many years that you revamped the ordinance to this for a commercial, is this, what this is for?
This is for the village commercial district. And so we've been working with the township on five in the district for a year now, um, to update the standards. And these test scenarios that I brought up were to, um try to, to try up to the standards that were in the code to give a work and if they're and the through that we can pick out and the issue that we, that might usually attract not basically go forward.
I'm not familiar with the commercial codes. I don't know the, some of the residential codes. Is this a lot different than what was already, I know you said the height forty feet wasn't any different, but are there a lot of differences in them?
I would say that in stuff that you think in front of this, but I don't think that fundamentally it's going to be changing. It is, a, a lot of it is cleaning up the language and simplifying it. Um, we have addressed a couple of things, like the setbacks. Um, but, um, in, in effect, excuse me. It, it would not be
uh, Harleysville or Lower South
Mike, you want to bring up a map that shows Village Commercial? So yeah, so Village Commercial is basically the zoning district that, uh, lines across, um primarily Sunday Town Pike. It also applies in Mainland Village and Lead Rock. So it's in very specific parts of the township, and it's that zoning designation. And what ends up happening is the regulations and ordinances are on the books for years and years. Over time, people, you know, present amendments, and after a while, it's good to go back and clean it up because you either create redundancy or gaps or confusion. So, um, the planning commissioner asked the county to help us go back and revisit the village commercial district because we knew it was an area that some people were looking to help us redevelop along, along Main Street. But at the same time, we want to make sure we clarified any of that confusion. So Mike, you want to take them through?
Yeah, so the, the village commercial district here is the darker gray brown color that you see. Um, this is Main Street. This is Maple, and this is one thirteen. And we are approximately in this location right now.
And I think we recently updated a couple of those frames, didn't we?
Um, yes, so this is this, this is, this shows the current. This was the most recent, um, addition to the village commercial district in Burnfield, right? To add a few of the outlined lots into the village because essentially they were part of the village, which was not in C District.
The village commercial, because it's the village, is allowed for density and uses that wouldn't be appropriate elsewhere in the township. Anybody else? Sorry. Name and address, some person. We see the
We see the the plot two and anyone, the second plan. I think. My problem is all one one thirteen major right there. There should not be an exit and there's.
There's Sunday Town Pike.
Yeah, we have bike.
Okay, yeah, you said one for one.
Actually, issues, no light, with with. The road's right there, there's the only other way there, there's plenty of land, but there's permanent. There's absolutely nothing interest right there.
So these are the.
That's it.
So so these are just them looking at a bunch of different scenarios of how someone could develop it.
Have that in it.
So so that we can look at it and say, what do we like and not like? So in the ordinance, we're allowed to then push the developer to say, since you can take access from the secondary road, that's where we want you to do it. As you know, there's a bunch of other partners in the village commercial where they don't have that latitude. So she's just showing what would be permitted, and then in land development, we would scare them away from that. Yep.
On here.
Clarify. I think there was a handover here. Rick Mass.
Rick Mass, um the mapping that you showed. The current location of the village commercial? Or the proposed, that's the current. So there's been areas within Harley'sville that have been added.
That's what I said, I thought there were a couple of greens that should be gray by now, shouldn't there? Including the test parcel.
I I think Rick is asking if some are now B C that were in previous, is that what you're saying?
Uh, I believe the. Less than that at at one time, it recently expanded.
It was actually in the middle of the village commercial, so village commercials started, then stopped for a little bit, and then picked back up again. Which led to a lot of, you know, irregular development scenarios within the same. Homogenous area, so there was a couple that we addressed along.
And there are sample. Yeah.
There's a draft language that we've been kicking around for the better part of the year now.
Um, not, um, I I highlighted this version to show exactly what changes for me since the last. Um, but I plan to bring. To grab all the changes for the next.
Before it gets public, we'll have a comment period, so we'll have time to distribute that. Anything else? All right, so we'll see you next time, Claire. Is I give you enough to work on?
Yeah. It's never been because I didn't hear a lot of issues. I'll take the comments that I heard and and the ones that I received via email. Um, but I don't think that there are any specific changes that. I'm sorry.
I think I think. The themes we've been hammering on, and to the gentleman's question in the back, that, you know, what we've been hammering on is. I think we want orientation of the building towards the street of the higher classification. I think we want parking primarily in the rear or, you know, as much as the rear possible, somewhere inside if necessary. Access in the secondary access point if possible, not always possible. I think the maximum building height is something we've also talked about pretty good bit, and then the road frontage occupation.
Yeah, so all of those that you just listed are. Pretty much flushed down some feet in the draft currently, so we just have a few things that's handy on the.
And just so everybody knows, there's also design standards that we put out. We can't fault the developer to enforce those standards, it's a guiding principle of what we want buildings to look like, so the village looks somewhat consistent in character. But we can't legislate that, but there is a document that does that outside of the subdivision land development order. All right. Thank you, Claire. Plan review, one ninety six Main Street.
Still with that.
Those were still running still.
Been here uh several times discussing this project. And there were some specific comments by the planning commission last month that we have tried to address and. Starting with the plan. The uh trash. Collection area for the bank is no longer on the plan. Um, it was suggested to go back to the bank and see if there was possibility of removing it, we did do that. And uh they generally like to incorporate the ability to do it in most of their branches, however. Uh they did concede that it wasn't an absolute necessity here, so we've taken it off the plan. They'll handle trash uh collection within their building. Uh and I've I've added a note to the conditional use plan that says if in the future a trash collection area is added, it would require the approval. Of the township, so that they couldn't just add it without coming back to. Get that approval. Uh, we also removed um. Uh, I believe four parking spaces in front of the retail building um for the side oriented towards Main Street. Um, right there, uh which uh allows additional green space in that area. Reduces our parking count by that amount, but we still uh comply with this with the ordinance. Uh, we added sidewalk uh next to, uh what is it, emergency access on Quarry Road? In that location. Um, that connection, we we were always planning to do it, but it hadn't been shown on the plan before, so we've shown that on the plan. Um. And then we adjusted uh some architectural elements, really for all of all of the buildings. Um. And then, Mike, if you want to just pull them up one by one.
So while they're doing that, just a reminder for the folks in attendance, this is a conditional use submission. So there will still have to be a land development at a subsequent phase. Um, under the zoning ordinance, they can propose to develop a buy right plan. Or they can propose to develop some elements by condition, that's why it's called conditional use. And then they have to stipulate what those are, and then the supervisors will de- decide if they agree or not with those conditions. But there will still be another land development review phase that we'll go through. Uh, this isn't the final, I'll remind the applicant of that as well. Um, but this is a general sense of what the the parcel would be developed as. Um, the supervisor will make the determination on if the conditions are satisfactory.
Uh, this is the retail building that is along Main Street, and this is the facade that would face uh Quarry Road or. The uh bank branch that's on the plan. So there has been a little more interest added to the the front facade. Uh, we did show some conceptual signage locations in the um gable portions of the building uh that you see. And then the next page, Mike, shows a. Uh elevation drawing for the side of the building that would face Main Street, and that was. We didn't have that elevation at all before, there was um some concern as to what that might look like. So right about where the cursor is, is where the four parking spaces were removed, so. That's the elevation of the building you could see from Main Street, uh where the access point is.
So I appreciate you moving those, I'm still not convinced that we're not, that we're done there. Um, as we go through land development, there's still two or three spots I want to see what the time, you know, transportation planner says.
Yeah, is that beside of the bank or the retail building?
That's the side of the retail building.
Okay, right, so that faces Sunday Town Pike.
Correct.
Yeah, okay. So the park. Okay, yeah, 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 right, and that's the one that's parked, okay, yep, I'm good.
Next slide is uh the the posed bank building. Um. I don't know that there were any. Revisions made to this, other than to tabulate the percentage of sloped roofs roofs. On the building, and it does exceed the minimum. Uh, required by ordinance. Um, the building materials, uh we stated last. Uh month are either stone. Uh, to match the other buildings on the site. Or a lapped siding, cement board siding material. There is more than one color there, but that's what the materials are on the bank. Um, the only portion that does not have a sloped roof is the portion towards the rear of the building right there. And the reason is that there's a power pad there. That is intended to hide all the HVAC equipment, so it would be mounted up there rather than. Along the foundation or somewhere else that where it would be visible. Um. I don't think I have anything else on on that building, unless somebody asks some questions. The uh apartment buildings we talked about maybe in some length last month, and we did make adjustments based on that feedback. Um. There was some concern that maybe there wasn't enough variation in the frontage uh facade. So we have introduced uh what we think. As an improvement, we've added more uh variation along with the side, both in the front. On the longer buildings, but also the side facade, there's now an offset in the side of the building. Then we decided to move the entrances at the end of the building to the side, rather than it's straight on. Which also gives it. A little more interest, uh. We did not have this perspective before, so it kind of gives you the three dimensional view of.
Very artistic, right? Can you also show the straight on perspective, which is what you said?
They're coming. Perspective at elevation.
How how far is that bunk bound part in front, like with like?
Two feet, if they're all two foot bunk beds. So that's straight on, that's what it looks like. So you can see on the left and the right sides, there's a little roof overhang, that's where the side entrance would be. And then under the roof, smaller roof areas along the center of the building would be where the center as entrances would be. We've tried to vary the the front facade, but also the roof lines, um. And there will be vertical separations, you can see those roof lines as well. So uh trying to respond to what the concerns were and. We've made it more uniform in color, too, if you recall. Last elevations uh. And more color elements than were shown now. And again, it's going to be either siding or stone with the uh materials.
And the siding will be like a hardboard.
It's probably going to be vinyl, I would think.
It's like a main, like. Same color, same materials. Any changes to the back facade?
There is a back elevation.
Oh, is it?
Yeah. That um was a specific request to show the elevation as it would appear from Quarry Road, so that's the side of the building. Um, where face adjacent to Quarry Road. It is um. Not a full walkout, but it's like a daylight basin basement there, so there's some exposure. Foundation's in the rear. And there's decks on both the upper floor and the lower floor, they do not, they're not on top of each other as they appear. Uh. But each one will have a deck. And then that is the side entrance as well, uh as you face Quarry Road. And the next slide is a rear, um and that would be the rear of the building that would face Quarry Road. And that is not. Right up against the road, there's actually some quite a distance of separation. Between Quarry Road and that building. There's also a detention basin. With a berm, and there will be landscape plantings along there too, so you're not necessarily going to see that exact view, it'll be buffered somewhat by those features. That's what the building will look like. That will be a walkout along the rear, and then you can see. The offset of the decks, the first floor and second floor. And we did try to provide some roof interests in rears of the building as well, so it's not just a street. Section, there's the offset of facade, of the rear facade, but also uh the gable intersections on the roof line as well.
Much better.
I think that's it, but. Oh, the floor plan is there, if anyone's interested, um. Just so you can see how it was thought out. Basically the same. Basic units, we did have to revise them slightly to work the side entry in and things like that, but. Same size units, that's right, yes.
So I'm looking at my notes, Rick, um. I know one of the requests was for the two units that run down along the adjacent property. Um, was there a way, taking advantage of the slope of the. Parcel to step down the bridge line? I know you've broken it with uh sort of offsets at both ends. But I think there was some feedback of. Stepping down those units.
Um.
Probably will take kind of help there, doesn't it?
Those units there?
Yeah.
If it's like the. Topography doesn't help us there necessarily, in that it's it's actually along the property line fairly uh level. But we are breaking those units nevertheless, um vertically as well, in both of those buildings. Um, they're actually high towards the middle of the two buildings and then lower as you go to either side. And then the uh building that faces or that's perpendicular. The all of the buildings will have vertical breaks, the only one that slopes continuously is is the one where the cursor is right there, that continues to step down as you approach quarry. There, yeah.
And then the other note I had was uh just have you worked up a rendering of what the pediment sign would look like?
No.
But there's agreement that it'll not. Not be a pedestal.
Um, ground mounted, in other words, I think that's.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear.
Ground mounted sign rather than all that.
That's correct.
One of the reviews about extending the sidewalk a short way, uh I think towards Sunny Town Pike. Did you look at that? So that someone walking along there could walk on a sidewalk.
So we would. Yeah, I I agree.
Another question on that emergency access, did you? Are you still showing or doing that as grass or doing some hard search?
We are not at present showing it as paving, but we can discuss that during the land development process. Not opposed to paving it if. It has to be, I think aesthetically it would be nicer without paving, and it tends to attract. It does not intend to attract unwanted traffic into it, but we can discuss.
Yeah, from an emergency services standpoint.
I understand.
You want to get us something?
No.
Any other questions? Questions or comments? Ma'am?
Um, again, Betty, Betty, Colleen, three chairs with. Um. And while I have a couple of requests, that's all I have, but we have it stone. Instead of black. Somehow that just sounded really, it may not be visualizing.
Stone instead of what?
And then you said something about black or something of those words, it was a dark color, you had mentioned.
No.
No?
It it would be either stone, it would be a combination, all the buildings would be a combination of stone facade. Siding and something. I don't think so.
The bank, yeah. About the bank.
Not black, uh that is this stone, uh this stone or siding? Black, black. Is it black?
Uh, and also the board has requested. The area, the drainage area to the something, they. But you wanted some kind of a session to say. That it was going to stay where it was so that it wouldn't have any other construction on it, you guys thinking about it?
We are, so we revised our plan to address that concern. So previously, there was one additional building that actually crossed that drainage area and we're close to. Hiding it, and we. Revised the plan to eliminate that. And uh we're keeping it open except for where it's crossed by the even line.
So we wouldn't have any future construction. And since any more stronger places than this, would you explain where the actual exits? Or the entrance?
The actual one, it's entering.
And the exits are.
So right right there where the cursor is, there is a controlled access. So that will be not a full access, you'll be able to go right in. Right out and most likely left in as well, because there is a left turn. That location. Will not be able. That's uh nature. Would not be able to go left. And then he. You know?
Right now.
That's wall wall there. You'll be able to get stayed as further down as the road that. Right there is the um, there's an industrial building there. Matrix, it's called, operates under there, it's a utility company. Then on the other side of that driveway is the Ure Prep area, that's a lot of us.
And there's the kind of space for the entrance, the exit being the. Well then, clean that hand. Wah wah and all the pennies that way and.
There is, and and aside from the township's review of all of that, uh that's state roads. Wire, it's a. Extensive.
But you would still require them and that's. Required for the orange side of that. So it won't be. A mess, you don't think?
Yeah, uh we may be required to offer the timing of the. Traffic studies uh review.
Just worries me because it's already passed over there and any is somebody has super wah wah, it's. Not what we needed over there, so I just. Very concerned about this to begin with, so I just was hoping there was pretty planning, knowing, you know. What was going to happen because we made a mess at the turnpike, you know, who went one way, go down. Take a half hour to get there and that's a whole other subject. I'm just saying, I'm hoping maybe one of these site, one of these projects, we can actually, we plan. Something that may not go wrong. I appreciate any effort in that.
The other main access is right there, that is the full access, that's the primary access of the quarry with the whole left and lane in and out.
We we spent a ton of time, that's going to have him to work with the township transportation engineer to figure out what was the right spot for that. Because, you know, as folks go out, that's the only way you could be able to make a left to go west on. Uh Sunday Town Pike, so we had to have enough queuing distance for the left turn lane. We didn't want it to be on the slope, if development occurred across the street, what's the logical place? So I think that was months of. Debate and analysis to figure that one out.
That's a shame because in the. Indian. Valley complimentary plan. Quarry Road was a little bit of scenic roads that they had. In the area, so. Um nothing to do about it now, but. I hope we can make the best of it since we like to use all of them, so. Thank you for your time, Jay.
Anybody else?
Uh Tyra Jackson, two oh five Fairway Court. Um you just mentioned that the main entrance is going beyond Quarry Road. And you guys looked at what that was going to do in the game of development on the other side, is there a plan for that currently?
So we 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 haven't had anything submitted, I mean. We we know that Mrs. Alabot has passed away and therefore there's an opportunity that may occur, but. Not been provided any plan. Then you have to ask the supervisors.
Um is that, are there going to be any changes on Quarry Road with the plan, is it going to be widened, turning lanes to go in there?
There will be widening along our frontage, not beyond it. But though. If you're familiar with that section, it's it's kind of a uh strange drainage feature that um just at the low point of the road, there's a. Stone weir that is developed sort of into a pond. That's going to be supposed to be removed and we're going to curb and sidewalk road along our footage. Um but we are going to also widen it enough so that there is room for a turn lane. So.
Will any drainage go across quarry from there?
All of it uh currently goes across quarry road, so.
On the backyard.
Uh you mean on Fairway Court?
On the fairway and I back up to the. Street and we have a drainage basin and we have sort of a river jar and the back of my property being pretty much a swamp when it gets wet. So I'm concerned about how much more water is going to go that way.
Yeah, none of this water will end up on Fairway Court just because of elevation, so. The stream channel that starts really above this property. Continues under Quarry Road and through the Alabot Farms. Pair amount lower than. The Fairway Court.
You're on this side, right?
Yeah, and I'm in the drainage easement that goes. I I feel like that's the start of it, I could be wrong, the drainage that it looks like on the.
It's actually not. This panel is perpendicular and you can't. I mean, they do eventually join together, but it's definitely all the Fairway Court properties and.
Anybody else?
I agree with you previous people. Um I know personally. It looks like your plan is through. Uh what? Morris to. Old Morris and out mainly road, that's somebody who works every day, has some home every day. This is going to cause a lot more traffic. When they figure it out, they're going to go that way. Those roads are not meant to have traffic. It's going to cause real issues. As soon as those people figure out things go that way to get either the people of the turnpike or to six three. They're all that way. So I can go through hard, I don't worry. It's going to cause them to do that way.
Yeah, it would be.
A possible can happen.
So Rick, I think. You've worked through most of the conditions you have to land and you're, are you guys on the agenda to go to the supervisors for a conditional use hearing, Mike?
Yes, it's on the agenda, it's been advertised, posted, uh president of the hearing text one said.
So there's a hearing with the supervisors next Wednesday, they're the legislative body that hears the conditional use application and then they rule on it. We provide comments, so I'd be looking for a motion to approve. And actually, if we don't even have to approve the plan, it's just a motion to uh stipulate concurrence with the conditional use for consideration by the supervisor. So I'd be looking for that condition upon the plan as submitted, including the elevations, and I'd like the elevations included. All in favor? You good?
No, thank you.
Thank you.
And what's going to time it up meeting?
Seven thirty, the night.
Seven thirty next Wednesday. Ordinance amendments, did we have it?
Uh none for discussion this evening.
Any questions? A motion to adjourn? Thank you, all favor?
Yeah, thank you.